It is now six thirty. I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, little secretary, please take the roll call.
Trustee Andrew.
Here.
Trustee Gunner the Week.
Yeah.
Trustee Fairfax is here. Do I call the folks who aren't here?
No, yeah.
Trustee here.
Here.
Um, trustee Logan is absent. Trustee Jarva Bothy is absent. Trustee Boss.
Here.
Due to uh medical uh issues, uh trustee Fox is not able to be uh here in person. Is there a motion to approve to uh approve trustee Fox's uh remote participation?
Motion.
Move that way, is there a seven?
Uh huh.
Second one, Christina, any discussion? Care of mine, those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye. Said it's approved before the remote participation. Next order of business is I have a few more minutes. Uh, we have uh three sets of minutes from uh mark meetings on March seventeenth, fourteen and sixteenth. Uh, are there any changes uh that need to be made to minutes as they are presented? During that, is there a motion to approve the minutes for those meetings?
So moved.
Moved by Ted, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the three sets of minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye, aye. Any objections? Hearing none, they are approved. Uh, tonight, I don't believe we call it comments. Uh, first up will be uh Bruce Burgel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Name. Uh, my name is Bruce Burgel. My wife Emily is here as well. Emily and I have resided in Oak Park for over thirty years and were longtime supporters and users of the library. And we wrote this statement together. We are here to express our outrage over the recent dismissal of the library's exec- how the recent dismissal of the like of the library's executive director was handled. While we're not in a position to evaluate the specific allegations against Ms. Dixon, we are offended at the manner in which the issue was handled by the board. The abruptness with which a decision of the board was made is as much an affront to the community as any that may have been made and committed by the library administration. We read about the controversy in the Wednesday Journal and received emails from the board and the director on the issue. Your statement of February twenty ninth stated that the staff cir- that a staff survey was planned and the end quote, "The evaluation process had been extended to include this input," unquote. We were shocked to find that the decision to separate ties with the library executive director had been made in such a sudden manner without completing the process described. What happened to due process? Restorative practice calls for all parties affected in the conflict to find positive resolution through open and honest communication and to repair relationships. Why were these principles not applied before such a rash decision sure to deepen the rift within the community and within the staff was executed? The board's actions have additionally exposed the library to potential liability and financial harm. Did the board seek to understand Ms. Dixon's vision for achieving the board's strategic priorities and the rationale for changes made? It appears quite incredible to us that a person whose reputation was forged as an advocate of diver- as an advocate of diversity, equity, and inclusion could be that could be the insensitive, autocratic bully that was portrayed by some. Sadly, it's too late now to heal the damages, financial and other, that have been done by the irresponsible action of the board. Board has not demonstrated an ability to appropriately navigate through the situation. We will all have to deal with the ensuing chaos and harm to institutional credibility for the foreseeable future. We can only hope that going forward, the board will apply the principles of restorative practice and due process in their actions. Thank you.
Nancy.
Hello, board.
Uh, hello, my name is Rory O'Neil and I'm gonna start offering a quick comment on the March sixteenth board meeting. You did not deserve the treatment that you got that afternoon. All of you conducted yourself with dignity and I tip my head to all of you. In particular, Christina and Matt, you were singled out, you were heckled. That's not right. Okay, my purpose for speaking to you tonight involves the upcoming appointment of an interim director. As a community, we have fences to mend. In particular, we need to try to regain the trust of our Palestinian-American fellow citizens. The appointment of an interim director can go a long way towards helping if the right person is picked. What our library needs right now is a peacemaker, someone who can begin the job of repairing the trust that has been broken. Jim Madigan would be an excellent choice if he is willing. He is known throughout the entire village, has everyone's respect. He knows and has the respect of village managers, District ninety-seven, Oak Park River Forest High School, the Oak Park Police Department, local press, and numerous others. He has served on numerous board boards and is serving on one now. Most important, he has close ties to members of our Palestinian-American community. He holds their friendship and respect. He is known and respected by library staff. There are fences to mend with our staff as well. He would be an excellent bridge to the future for our library. Appointing Jim Madigan would also give you time to pick the right director. A decision on your part to bring Jim Madigan as interim director would go a long way to bring peace back to our library. And he has absolutely no idea I'm speaking about him tonight, no. Okay, conversely, the interim director's position should not come for our cur- come from our current leadership team. It would be a step in the wrong direction. It would send a signal that the offensive and double standard handling of the recent Freedom of Information Act requests is being swept under the rug. Our library cannot afford to send that message. Finally, and this is uh light stuff, I'm gonna email all of your trustees on your official email address. The email will have an attachment. I welcome you to open up the attachment, I advise you to open up the attachment. It's relative for what you're all going through right now and it might even bring a smile to your face. That's it, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Uh, Megan Jackson.
I'm Megan Jackson, these are my children, Malcolm and Emmett. Uh, we live in Oak Park, I'm a graduate of Oak Park River Forest High School, so I've been enjoying this library since before it looked this nice. Um, I bring this, I bring my children to this library often. I host community events at the library and I especially love the free printing. So I wanted to just come and uh be a voice of all the things you're doing right right now because I'm a bit concerned by the response of some of my neighbors in light of the recent events. Um, I wanna thank the library board and the staff, um, but especially the board, I wanna thank you for volunteering your time and for making really hard decisions. Um, I'm really grateful that you listened to the staff members who were harmed by the library leadership. I've been a whistleblower myself and I know how incredibly scary that is and it's very hard to advocate for yourself and your colleagues when you're in that position. And so I'm grateful that you all took their lived experiences with the weight and gravity they deserve because any in- injustice to anyone in our community is an injustice to everyone. Um, I brought my children here today as a visible reminder that our children are watching us navigate these moments. They're watching us um when we spew vitriol and hate and they're listening. Um, so I hope that all of our community members will remember that we're in it together. We have to solve these problems together. Um, but thank you very much for what you're doing and I personally think you made the right decision.
No, I'm good. I don't hear Megan with a B, I can't quite look out for that name.
Megan Button.
Alright, thank you.
Hello. My name is Megan Button. I have been a resident of Oak Park for over twenty years. Um, I lived in Oak Park because I believed that it was a community that showed my values and I would never really have to speak before a library board or school board because they would make decisions that I'm really so upset about. But today I'm here to do that. Um, I've also been for thirty years a professional librarian. Um, I have, my whole career has been in private librarianship, um, but I am still a librarian who has friends and am part of that community. One of the big problems in our profession, any law library, public library, eighty percent of the people look like me. Eighty percent is white. And it's been a problem the whole thirty years I've been down the pipeline, it's still gonna be a problem. Every professional organization, the American Association of Law Libraries, the American Li- the American Library Association have all put many resources into trying to change that. Um, because representation matters, it really just does. And when I started to see the headlines that there were problems here and the executive director was under fire for things, I read the articles, I paid attention, but I really had faith that the right thing would be done. I really had faith that that, you know, they would come to some conclusion that everybody could work with and that everybody could be happy with. After hearing about um Ms. Bowling Dixon being unceremoniously fired last couple of weeks ago, I was shocked. I was shocked and I started watching all the board meetings, started looking at the minutes, started reading the articles, started talking to people in my community locally as well as nationally, other librarians I know, to find out what was going on. Everything I heard about her was going, everything I heard about her were people that were outraged. Um, my understanding was there were difficult decisions that had to be made in the budget, that's gonna have to be made all the time. And I just can't really understand what happened here. And it's really upsetting to me as a professional librarian and as a community member. And as a board, you have one employee and that's the executive director. All the other employees matter, but you have one employee and you didn't even take the time to see through supporting her till the end as to what happened. And I think that's upsetting. I think it's gonna be problematic in the future to find somebody of her caliber who wants his job to know that they don't have to support the board. I think there's been damage to the community and I think there's been damage to her as an individual. And I'm just mistaken.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Tiffany.
Um, thank you to everybody else who's spoken. I think you were well, well thought out, well presented. Um, I'm gonna give you um my thoughts, I'm still um gave a a comment at the last board meeting, um, but I felt I needed to come and follow up. So my name is Tiffany Brazani. Um, I'm a librarian with thirty years of experience in the Chicagoland area. I've been an Oak Park resident for twelve years and I'm a taxpayer with police supports, robust services, and all those areas of life that support our kids and families and a productive, progressive community, our libraries, our schools, our park district, our village. However, I'm still very concerned by what I see as the unorthodox and sudden firing of the library director and the negative impact it will have on our library staff, community, and library profession. Um, and because it was referred to, you know, in a sudden way without um the community um input or oversight, that the board director was not even given an evaluation for their year here, it just seems that the board really had no compunction about what you were doing. And thinking about the ethical impacts, aside from trustee Fox, I appreciate your nay vote. Um, that the effect that the board is gonna have to contend with now is having your actions examined through FOIAs, perhaps having contentious um debates in an election where your seats are at odds. Um, I think your actions to fire an exceptional library director who was making needed improvements, bringing budget concerns to you, um, has done as much harm as book banners and other protesters have had in our profession. Included in your packet this evening are congratulatory remarks under stewardship and those are the facts of staff satisfaction, the highest score in theaters. I wonder who could have been an impetus for some of that change, perhaps the library director. Someone who is a mentor, collaborator, and a supportive staff. Someone on the staff who said at the last board meeting that it was the best director that this library has ever had. Um, the board is now gonna be pulling the staff along a process to hire a search firm and a new director and spend time and money and cause stress when they could have just again provided Director Dixon with a proper evaluation, do your correct oversight and mentoring and support of her and helping to navigate challenges. Um, I think Jim Madigan is a great choice if he would do it. Um, but if not him, who? What search firm will wanna work with this board when you already had difficulties in hiring one last time? What staff will trust to share their needs with you when you ask them what qualities are you looking for in a library director? Perhaps again they'll say, oh, those qualities that Director Dixon had. And what director's gonna want to come here to lead when it appears that this just board just really wants a figurehead and is not really following through on the restorative practices that they say they hold so dear? Thank you.
Rory, the public comments that were submitted. We need our web form. Nadine Thompson. I worked at the Oak Park Public Library uh for more than twenty years, I loved my job. The library represented the best qualities Oak Park had to offer, acceptance, inclusion, innovation, and support for diversity of opinion. I have known Jocelyn Bowling Dixon since she first came to work at the library. I have admired her for how she pursued, preserved her career in library science and worked her way up to library director. I was glad when she came back to us. I am therefore appalled at her treatment by this board. The incident regarding programming was unfortunate, but not at a degree warranting dismissal. Cooler head should have prevailed. Instead, the board, by not separating this incident from Ms. Bowling Dixon's dismissal, has created the impression of caving to a vocal minority. The library is a workplace and in any workplace, there will be unhappy employees and budgetary constraints. The board alleges it has issues with the actions of the director for months. There are processes to follow when that happens to ensure fairness and protect the rights of parties involved. To do that, the board needed to take a step back, assure people involved with the event that their concerns were being addressed, and give Ms. Bowling Dixon the opportunity to fix what went wrong. Any other issues with her employment could then have been dealt with separately. But the board has done firing Ms. Bowling Dixon in such a public, hand-handed way has caused damage not only to her reputation, but the reputation of the library. Ms. Bowling Dixon will go on to have a successful career, but what will happen to her library if the next local effort is, say, to ban books? Well, the board came then to, the precedent has been set, now what? Rogini De Silva. To the board, I appreciate the work the board did to follow up on testimony shared during the last few board meetings, especially by staff members of color. Specifically, I think the board did the right thing by conducting a follow-up investigation in response to testimonies of employees who reported being harmed by library leadership. I don't see how any responsible board could have done otherwise, given the gravity of the testimony shared by library staff. Thank you for acknowledging the critical role that the library's organizational culture plays in its ability to meet the community's needs. I personally view the organizational culture described in staff testimony as being antithetical to the library's commitment to anti-racism and felt the board needed to take action to stand by its stated commitment to make the library inclusive. To those who are concerned about how the board's course of action affects the image of the Oak Park library, I would respond that a commitment to anti-racism has to be deeper than how certain actions appear to outsiders. It must include a willingness to to surface and address actions that were encountered to this commitment. I think in this regard, the board has made a difficult but appropriate decision. Thank you for your work, Rogini De Silva. Magdalene Melanie Sykes. Dear Oak Park Library Board Trustees, I'm the twenty-three-year Arts District resident of Oak Park. I've been following the manufactured controversy surrounding the recent events and would like to voice my support for the current leadership team. I appreciated your official response, you had struck, struck me to see the phrase, the sheer number of those that reached out. Please know that the loudest voices are not always the majority of voices. I am hoping that you are getting comments or soliciting feedback from our Jewish community. And I'd like to suggest that in future discussions surrounding this event, you acknowledge this part of the community as well. I am certainly speaking to my Jewish neighbors about this, so I hope you'll be here, you'll be hearing from them soon. It is disingenuous of this small group of online activist warriors to act as though the event ever should have been a library-sponsored event to begin with. Otherwise, we certainly look forward to an Israeli holiday event at the library as well. And if I may be so bold, if Ms. Griffin was telling the truth, as quoted in the Wednesday Journal, that she has never heard of the term "library event" before, then may I suggest she is the one who needs evaluation because she clearly does not know her job. Even folks like me, library users, but not library workers, know there's a difference between a library event and a community-sponsored event. Not only that, who cares what the official designation was? Was it a successful event? Great. Why did this turn into such a petty argument unless fueled by insider antagonism? I'm sorry that Ms. Griffin didn't do her job correctly in the first place, but to turn it around and incite the public to say such defamatory things about the administrative team is just reprehensible. And it is very disheartening that the board seems only to be listening to those loudest voices who are their friends. I thank you for listening to this voice and urge you to remember, not everyone at Oak Park is being represented in the online conversations and I use that term very loosely. And for the record, the only harm I see done is to your staff. I sincerely hope you are taking care of them. Sincerely yours, Maggie. Camille Gauthier. Dear board, in the wake of your recent irresponsible decisions, I ask that you please take a moment to pause before making any other hasty decisions and remember what the role of a library is in the community. If in your statement on March sixteenth, you cited your firing of the former executive director being due to persistent lack of alignment between the priorities of the board and the executive director, you claim this was a problem because of relationship between the board and the ED is absolutely essential to advancing the strategic vision and plan based on the needs of the community. My question, what exactly are your priorities, vision, and plan for the library if not aligned with those of an accomplished, respected ALA accredited executive director? What goals and priorities can you possibly have for a library that do not agree with those of a director who for sixteen months has done nothing but work to figure out how to best serve our community? How does designating OPPL as a book sanctuary not line up with your priorities? How does moving a multicultural collection from a dusty, forgotten corner at a branch location to the main library not match with your vision? How does bringing back physical newspapers due to demand from older patrons disagree with your plan? I ask because I'm generally confused about what exactly the board expects of a public library. An activist organization, a library is not meant to be that, a community center, that is something different, not a library. Let us look for a moment at one of the several definitions of a public library provided in, on the American Library Association's website. In the Librarians' Book of Lists, Chicago ALA twenty ten, George Everhart offers this definition. A library is a collection of resources in a variety of formats, that is, one, organized by information professionals and other experts who, two, provide convenient physical, digital, bibliographic, or intellectual access, and three, offer targeted services and programs. Four, with the mission of educating, informing, and or entertaining a variety of audiences. Five, and the goal of stimulating individual learning and advancing as a society as a whole. Therefore, as a public library, we are a community resource that is bound to providing information and resources to a wide diverse audience. Furthermore, I would like to highlight two statements from the ALA Code of Ethics. Six, we do not advance private interests at the expense of the library users, colleagues, or employee employing institutions. Seven, we distinguish between our personal convictions and professional duties and do not allow our personal beliefs to interfere with fair representation of the aims of our institutions or the provision of access to the inform- of their information resources. I ask the board, are you allowing your or other library employees' personal beliefs or private interests to guide your vision and plan for the library? I highly recommend that before moving forward, the board members revisit the various resources on the ALAs and Public Library Associations websites to refresh yourselves on the roles and ethics of a public library. I believe that if the purpose and values of a public library are not something that you can agree with or support, perhaps you should better pursuing a leadership role at another institution that federal ends with your priorities. Sincerely, Camille Gauthier. Joel Pittman, John Pittman Barber. Some weeks ago, I attended a Palestinian cultural program at the Oak Park Public Library. I remember the program included a movie instruction on how uh kaffiyah can be worn in dancing, especially the dancing. I found it quite delightful, being someone who did a lot of folk dancing in my youth, my wife even ordered a couple of books. We are former Oak Park residents, we lived in Oak Park for nearly twenty years. We were told about the program by one of our children who lives in Oak Park. I greatly appreciate the openness of Oak Park Library hosting this multi-sited program in the midst of a general closing down of cultural exchange during the Middle East conflict. As someone who was raised in an anti-Jewish, anti-racist Jewish family that strongly believed in multicultural awareness, I especially appreciate the Oak Park Library's sponsorship of such programming at this time. Presentation at this type of cultural activity is all more important to maintain our democracy, which is still under threshold lows who would reduce us to our rigid monolithic uniformity. Laura Paz. To whom it may concern, I recently attended a sensitive and heartwarming cultural program on Palestine in the Oak Park Library with my daughter and three grandchildren. It was such a breath of fresh air because of the war happening in Gaza and it was a positive way for brand kids to understand the situation. Just recently, I learned there was some kind of negativity in reference to the program. I can't imagine how anyone could possibly perceive anything negative about that program. It was a wonderful way that my grandchildren and I could learn about the culture of Palestine and not perceive anything negative about them. We are Mexicans and we live in Milsim. As Latsienas, we have personally faced the prejudice and bias that society imposes on us. So, a culturally sensitive program about Palestine was a breath of fresh air for my family. I can't imagine anyone opposing the dancing, singing, food we were exposed to as being anything but wonderful. Whoever might be forming these negative ideas, I would personally question what their motives could be. Bringing people together as was done in this program is a feather in the cap of the town and library of Oak Park. Also, I attended a Palestinian um cultural event at the Oak Park Public Library several weeks ago. It was informative with traditional crafts to try, books and other media. It was joyful, the story sharing, fabulous food and dancing, such a positive recipe in times of trouble. I've heard that some people have suggested this kind of activity is not appropriate for library sponsorship and might be offensive in light of Israel-Palestine hostilities. I have heard that some people may have been fired because of it. On the contrary, we need these kinds of activities. The library has responsibility to sponsor such thing and to maintain staff for the purposes of supporting them. Anyone who would suppress these activities plays into the hands of oppression and racism. As a former Oak Parker, I'm disappointed that libraries support this program could even be questioned. Leslie Hestram. As a thirty-year resident of Oak Park, school librarian and avid library supporter, I will be watching this issue very closely and will join with others in protecting our wonderful committed OPPL staff. I would be expecting accountability from this board, our community deserves and demands better. That concludes public comments. Uh, trustee comments and calendar. You do everything.
Just wasn't after Milsim.
Okay.
Um, I know I'm gonna be missing whatever is next.
Then go ahead, I would make a quick comment. Um, I, about uh some of the the FOI questions recently, I, I received um one of the co- 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 acting interim director, Susie Wollbe-Hilt.
one of the co-acting interim director, Susie Wollbe, helped myself and trustee gang Google lead about the handling of some of the FOIA requesting question and informed us that the the one that was not redacted was the one that was provided and reviewed by her. And the one that was redacted was one that she had questions about and referred to her attorney, and the attorney provided those redactions in response to the FOIA in question. I want to make sure that it's very clear that that those redactions were were done by our counsel and not by Ms. Woll. She followed our procedures and was acting in best accordance with the first FOIA that came across her desk and then did what she thought was responsible and forwarded to our attorney a second that was received later to for them to reveal when they provided those redactions, so. I would like to make sure that that is, you know, is out there and hopefully to put that that question to rest. Any other trustee comments?
I just don't see the calendar.
The trustee calendar, is it? The thing I would mention is I know trustee Fairback said I'm the trustee William are registered for the annual trustee banquet, which is taking place on Friday, May third. It will be held at nineteen century club. So, we're at a lock and distance, and the last day to register is April twenty-eighth. If you're interested, please send myself a command email and get you registered. And I will be forwarding you, there's another event from Atlas, which is a group of Southern South suburban, and they're also having a trustee dinner as well.
Thank you.
I just won't be able to, whatever it is.
What kind of excuse?
Yeah, I'm not calling anybody.
There's a corner.
She's kidding.
I hope you.
But it's my second.
You never know, I mean, my second was two weeks late, so.
Then you're good vibes, but yes.
Been through that that scheduling process with my wife, so I have a removed appreciation of what that could be like for you.
Christine, I apologize.
I love your humor usually, I'm just not in the mood to joke.
So, all right, next then will be our interim director report.
So I think I can send you guys an email kind of in just discussing what we have been doing in the last week, and then I did one of bring your attention to the staff credibilities report. This is something that we, I'm going to do my best with context for Mallory. In the fall, former executive director Dixon worked with the leadership team and the board to build a report that would have a shorter narrative. It also seems that you guys wanted to see more staff praise and comments that you could use as talking points. She worked with Mallory, who is our consultant to develop this. We also edited, updated the logic model. And so what you're gonna see in front of you is it's less narrative-heavy, it's more visually appealing, hopefully. And it also creates space for work done by all teams. The teams, the public services and programmers tend to get a lot of highlighting in this, and we really wanted to highlight some of the work behind the scenes. And so there are two months worth of reports, there is January and there is February. The things I want to highlight, the home delivery service, this is the spearheaded purge is being led by Erin, who's in the Adult Services Department, and it gives you a breakdown of how that's being utilized. And staff spotlight is Nora. Nora has been doing a lot of work with the migrant community in Oak Park and trying to provide resources for them. She's also done a lot of translating of our documents, which has been really helpful, and she's been able to connect with them. The other thing I would like to draw your attention to is this Excel high school diploma. This is a really interesting program. They can, we have so many seats and they go through an interview process. And what they do is somebody can complete the high school diploma, so if they're a few credits short. And this, the person, they have one person who officially graduated. And he left senior year with a few credits shy, and they can go through this Excel diploma program. So we feel really proud that we were able to, you know, help someone complete that. And then I want to highlight our watercraft facilities team. We have two electric vehicle charging stations that are in the garage right now. And those were installed in January, and that is, you know, also a source of revenue as well, as we are charging for that. And then in, you know, January, we also had a sort of practice conference, which was very well-attended, and it was a really great day.
Oh, yes, so we recently sunset a fiction pullout and changed kind of the heading of that. We wanted to make that collection more diverse, and so by changing it to thriller, we were actually able to increase the diversity fifty-eight percent. So we've been doing that throughout the fiction and nonfiction collections. I can, I can talk a little bit about our our partnership, if you want to go down to our anti-racism and equity. So the library has been chosen as a partner by Collection HQ, which is a division of Baker &amp; Taylor, to work with them around their diversity, equity, and inclusive software. And so they've chosen several libraries from around the world. We have been chosen. So at PLA, both Barbara Fitzgerald and I will be doing a presentation on our collection and kind of what our curation process looks like.
And that's next week?
Yes.
And yeah, February was very, very busy with programs. We did a lot of work to block history. There was a little New Year celebration, so I do want to, you know, give a great shout out to the staff who worked really hard to put this all together. And it was a new thing, and I think we finally have gotten the hang of it more. And I would, you know, welcome your feedback if you find it easier to digest. I know that there's two months in here, seven one, but you know, if you have any feedback to take back, we would be welcome to the map, but.
I really like the this format and and the very gaps of all of the information. I find it very helpful. I'm gonna try and give it one more month before I start, you know, like, like, just to kind of like acclimate myself to looking at it before I start, before I start, you know, offering any thoughts on it, but I think so far, I think this has been very, a very, very helpful method of presentation to us. And I'm speaking for myself, yes. Anything of note in our statistics? Everything looks to be.
Yeah, I know.
Keeping up pace, it's not been really. Jumped out again, I'm trying to remember, but I don't see it, so.
How, I'm looking at the pop-up shop that's online is still ongoing, right?
On what page are you on, Suzanne?
The the merch, the pop-up shop.
Yes.
So it switched from in person, like, in the lobby to online, right?
You know, I'm not sure where they're at with that. I know that was the manager now that's online. It is online, so.
And how's that going in the morning?
I have, I'm not sure quite yet, but I would be happy to look into that and give you guys some more, and maybe we can report on that. I think that happened just this month. I'd be happy to report on that next month.
Susie, it would be really helpful to see sort of how the in-person versus the in-line.
Online, yeah.
Mess together, yeah, all right.
I do think that from what I understood is we have the in-person has been, has gone away from the lobby.
Oh, yeah, so there's no.
So I think the idea was to kind of do it in like, so right now we're just doing online to see how the sales are, and then and then maybe in the summer, they're gonna buy some new things and, you know, kick off summer meeting and have all of the stuff. I do know I did oversee, because somebody was wearing, I was showing one, the library cards, the new cards that we have. They had these cool little like, well, I don't know, it's a children's one, and they have the same design on the shirt, and it's a little child's toddler shirt, and so it's really, they got some new products now. So I think they're just gonna refresh and then we launch. But, you know, definitely next month, I can provide some initial information on that.
Thank you.
Can I ask, you did say about the software, and I was, I was curious how that software functioned, helped with, you said the Baker?
Yes, so Baker &amp; Taylor is a company, we purchase a lot of our current materials. They have various modules that help you track what you're purchasing. We do that ourselves in our curation model, like, we actually go through and identify what is diverse and inclusive. But they are developing a module that's going to help with that process, so they really wanted to work with libraries that were known for a very diverse collection for feedback.
Okay, so it was like they kind of recognize the work that's been done by the librarians and were like, hey, because you're a good model, you're like, I don't, I remember the Jimmy Stewart magic town, right, from like Frank Capro, it's like, oh my gosh, this is like the perfect piece of America.
Yes, we're, we're very thrilled, we're enthusiastic, you know, it is recognition for the work that the team has been doing, so.
So much for explaining that.
Anything else from the staff reports?
Just that next month, well, next week is the Public Library Associations Biannual Conference. This is a big deal for money of this public library, and so it's every other year, the show's gonna be called Miss Ohio, and the number of us are going, so. And like, we said, they're giving a presentation, so it's always nice to be able to highlight staff in some of these national stages.
And is it just Lee and Barbara that are doing the presentation, or are there people also doing the presentation?
I think, I think. Yeah.
You all have amazing presentations at ALA.
And I know there's a cohort that's going to ALA and presenting, and that's a big team. The collection team is going.
Wonderful.
And then actually, so he also is presenting at ALA as well about the book.
And we're, and we're expecting the electric one this year.
Yes, I did just hear back from the vendor, so he said he just got the motor car, so we're hoping to ship a short.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful.
Yes, that's that.
It's really great.
That's wonderful. We will go into financial reports. We have January and February.
This is trustee Foss. I do have a question which kind of blends into both staff reports and financial reports. I wrote to Board President Pruth today. I have a budgetary question. As we, the board, and as we look to an interim administration, I noticed in Susie and Lay's report to oversee the library's finances, to ensure that the library is spending within its, in its approved budget. How will we be realigning the budget to cover the additional costs of outside communications and consultant fees, past and present? Employee investigations, staff survey costs, cost to engage a professional service firm to identify a new executive director? And those kinds of things, how are we going to realign our budget? And this, I think, both works with the staff report and as we go into financials. Thank you.
Yes, that's an excellent question. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to respond after work. We're gonna, as a board, we're gonna have to look at the budget we passed and get, and once we engage and look at what the proposed costs are for the, you know, search firm, if we, you know, what those costs would be related to an interim director as well as the the survey, and look to see if we will need to make any amendments to our budget with with the realignment of those of line items, or if there are things that could be deferred to twenty-twenty-five that will allow us to account for those expenditures. But that will be a thing we'll, I will definitely have to look at in our next in our, in our next, probably our next couple of meetings.
Thank you.
So we have the financial reports. Is there any questions related to the January or February reports? Early in the year, and not a lot of the tax revenue has started to come in yet. A lot of, a lot of that property tax revenue is carried over from late payments of last year. And some other payments we'll probably start seeing, they've already started seeing a lot of money flow in this month. At the end of this month and the next month, we'll, we'll see as that, as those payments start to get made. We have also our resolutions on dispersments for both January and February. Is there a motion to approve those two resolutions? Moving back, Christine, is there a second?
I was reading this on the tray, and it was really small, and I can actually, my whole eyes can read better here.
I did appreciate the, in January, the letting us know that the that we're, even though it's January, that the one public services line is already at sixteen percent because of spawn, or the fee comes in, so that that line is high because it's a, we pay that at the beginning of the quarter.
And then children's media? I thought that in which page was it? What month? Now I'm going back, it looked reasonable. Now I'm just, now it's just my old eyes. Because I saw the library of things. The office supplies. On page seventy-five of one oh four, February twenty-twenty-four dispersments journal, office supplies, children's really a book, which is materials, Julian Museum item, Amazon supplies for multicultural, children's really a office supplies, books, library of things. I don't know if I've just been sloppy in my review. But I was just curious. Because at first I thought, oh, that must be something to do with the children's department books of some sort. But then why do we have books separately and office supplies separately and whatnot?
So, from, it's all from Amazon, right?
Uh, is it?
Yeah.
It is.
Amazon Cabinet Services, it's at the. Amazon Cabinet Services, it's at the bottom of page seventy-four.
Okay.
Is the, is the vendor.
Yes, exactly, yeah, there we go, I'm just reading too fast, I'm sorry.
So I think that Amazon, we pay them with an invoice process, and so oftentimes they will oop things on the same invoice and we have to kind of say, this is going to office supplies, this is going to, there's a person Julian Museum item, children's, children's really a, what made her wrong is like a kit.
Ah, it's like a kit, I think, like the American Girl dolls come out of that as well.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, these are various things from one particular vendor.
Vendor, and these are all the dispersments to that one particular.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, I was just like, why do we have that mixture? But now that, now that has made sense.
When we do.
I get that.
I mean, you know, yeah, personally, you know, Amazon tends to be the place where you can get books and office supplies and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is unfortunate, the unfortunate reality of, of, of the, of the marketplace right now.
It's not for jobs?
No. So, uh, Christina, may I? Say, by my, are there any further discussions or questions? Not hearing none, those in favor, say aye, right?
Um, Matt. Matt, um, given my earlier comment, uh, I wish to abstain on financial reports, thank you.
Okay. Good, uh, now going on to additional reports, uh, I go.
It looks like it's been a hundred years, um. We're not doing a sprint in a minute, we're gonna do all of them, that is around elections stuff, not like federal election, like our, our local election information.
Okay.
And.
Okay, like, we're working. We've been talking about committees.
Yeah, committees and how, and how we're getting more committees from different, and we have some example of forums and then the village actually went live with some of their committees. Um, but to the folks from the village, there was a time challenge on the, on the meeting was.
Oh, right.
It was listed as the evening and it happened in the morning, but, um, they, uh, they went, they went live with, um, promoting committees and so we're looking at those to kind of help get more people from the community involved and let people know what they can do, so that we have.
Because especially, I mean, not so much for the library, but personally other, um, governing bodies, like they have a lot of vacancies and they're trying to fill them and get the word out to the public, so thinking about public engagement and how to encourage folks to not just vote, but like maybe join a commission, join a committee, all of that.
That is, that is.
I'm glad we tagged team that, I really feel excited.
That tag has not met since our last board meeting. Uh, I'll get the, I'll share with Suzie and Lee the calendar that they sent, I'll make sure to send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let me read.
Yes, um, we had a meeting last week on Thursday, I believe, and both Matt and Christina Barreva were there. And I want to commend them for the fact that we in the O P P L are doing a wonderful job in community learning in all of these things that Planet Green is doing. Um, it's interesting that there is, uh, kind of a change from community foundation funding for Planet Green to other, other ways that we are looking at this, but I think the library, uh, plays a, a vital function in community learning for the whole idea of sustainability and the goals of Planet Green. So thank you both.
Okay. Thank you, Ted, uh, friends of the library.
The friends, uh, have their annual meeting on the eighteenth of March and they discussed, um, one, the focus on getting their nonprofit chats moving forward, um, and requested, um, and also went over their finances and requested an itemized breakdown, which Suzie pretty much immediately, um, gave to the friend, which was very helpful. I, I hope, um, and, uh, we'll see at the next meeting, which will be May twentieth, um, how that goes. There was also a change in how the schedule was, so a little bit more organized, we're gonna sit down and decide those schedules um, in advance to help with the membership. The two, for the past two years, I have that they have earmarked funds for nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars for twenty twenty-three and earmarked funds for twenty twenty, for twenty-two earmarked funds for twenty twenty-three of forty-three thousand three hundred dollars. And they were reviewing with the library's last request and had some additional questions on the programs that were suggested. Um, there were some, uh, concerns about, um, how donations had been used in the past and of the fact that no capital improvements as part of their bylaws.
Okay.
So that will probably be explored into going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And capital expenses to be clear were utilized, they, the donations were utilized for capital expenses.
Okay. Uh, I mean, do they, we have, do they, I'm just gonna talk about dates of the voter yet, that not that.
I did not.
I'm assuming that they were just.
I did meet with them, we have a plan, there was that for the book there.
Okay, perfect.
And then the dates are already on the calendar.
Okay.
And we have everything, so.
Have they hosted their elections yet?
They did host their elections, that are annual meeting, and not only treasure, um, Leia, um, uh, um, Masua. Um, on the ninth of April, there will be a new event, which is library trivia.
Oh, is the date, when?
April ninth, ninth at seven P M, library trivia.
This is their annual social.
Their, their social.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Did they have like pretty good participation in the election and all that this year?
I thought they had a pretty nice, a nice group of, of folks who, who showed up.
Right.
Um, and, you know, they, they do have, uh, you know, the desire to get a little bit more robust and uh, organize with calendars and whatnot, which I thought was, was wonderful and asking good questions. And really just.
We have something to commend that to the weapon.
Wonderful. All right, moving on, uh, new business resolution, updating financial signers, uh, with recent changes, we need to, um, have, uh, update, update the, the bank who, who can be a signer on that. On that, um, we have a resolution in our packet with us, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Move by mine, is there a second?
Second.
Second, best, are there any questions or discussions? Hearing them, uh, I don't think we do all of this, if, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye, that's sentence, all right, that is approved.
May I do the cabinet sign?
I do not.
Well, my husband even couldn't have him sign it.
Yeah.
We don't need it.
You want to stop answering? Have a boost of that in the day.
Next, we have, um, uh, the agenda, it's staff survey. Um. Uh, Christina had a conversation with, um, Yardstick and was able to get, uh, they provide, they sent over a, um, proposal.
Thank you.
Um. So, um, so Christina, do you wanna?
I just. Yeah, I was really impressed with them, like their conversation was, was, um, I think what, a lot of what you said with Adam, similarly, like acknowledging that, you know, nothing, no survey is gonna be perfect, no survey is gonna point to the capital T truth, but like, um, they really thought about a lot of different things, um, earnestly. So I, I appreciated the conversation, it's like for probably an hour and their price was a lot less than what I don't know, I. But I didn't have any even like real yellow flags to come, I thought that they were, um, they'd done this, they felt confident in it. Um, I think I've been feeling that, yes, clearly, you know, that, I guess.
This is new one else, I, I did, I sent it, um, you sent this to the board yesterday. I sent it to, um, Suzie and Lee, uh, earlier today, um, cause I, I meant to send it last night, but just got to, it got brain fogged, um, but I was hoping that, you know, what they, to get their feedback as well as, you know, the heads of staff, then what they're, if they had any initial thoughts on that is, you know, what they're, what they're thinking of, of that. Does anybody on the board have any thoughts on this? I will say that, um, I did have two other referrals that I'm trying to follow up with, but obviously, um, they're not here, you know, didn't, didn't get proposals in time for our discussion here, one is holistic index and the other one, let me pull that up, let me get that, um, was, um. Chan Consulting, um, you know, I, I don't have any other details for this, I, I will say that given, you know, the, the language of this proposal and the fact that it is significantly less than, um, Adam Goodman's, and I, from the, from the inclination here, what I saw was this would be a much broader, um, that I didn't see any kind of limitation on the number of staff that would be surveyed. Uh, for Adam Goodman's was, uh, I think fifty staff members for twenty thousand dollars and this, and this did not put a limit on that, I think, since, since I knew everyone who popped the fifty person limit on Adams.
I'm sure.
Yeah, cause you, you sent me that, I think you texted me, you're like, did I read that right, that it was only fifty? And I was like, oh, I missed that, thank you for catching that, um, so.
And your stick doesn't, doesn't.
I do.
When you.
It wasn't a question we asked, but it didn't come up, I mean, they were very much like, we would collaborate, it depends on what the board is looking to really, you know, answer for, I guess, um, and what I really, I'm like reviewing the notes now, cause every day feels like a year, but it, um, they were, what I liked was also like that they didn't over promise anything. They were like, based on the data, we would determine X, Y, Z, and, and so, um, but I didn't ask specifically about limitations. I didn't see it though in the, um, proposal either though.
Yeah, and I would say that when, when I had my conversation with Adam, it, a number that, like, a limit of the staff did not, you know, number of respondents did not come up in our, in the conversation I had with them, seeing that in the proposal was the first time that that came up, so, um, I think that, but I, you know, I did say that I, you know, I did like the, kind of that, the pre-engagement piece with, you know, uh, with us and also, you know, I, I, I think, you know, some staff members as well and stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I really like this proposal, you, you know, right now we only have the two, um. I personally am at this point comfortable with, with moving ahead with Yardstick, um, I, I, it's.
Another, I really liked that they were willing and able and prepared to take on, like, what do we do with the data to, like, how do we present it, do we present it to the board, do we present it to staff, do we present it differently to each party? Um, and I thought that was awesome, smart.
Can you make one comment?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So they all work at Playboy.
I did notice that as well.
They what?
They all work at Playboy.
They, like, she came from Playboy, right?
So all of that, like.
Yeah.
Winna, Jenny, Hazel.
Yes.
That's my only concern is they have no public library, I mean, just not even like normal government. They come from a very specific industry that, you know, if they're going to be conducting town halls with staff, wanting to make sure staff feel comfortable and, you know, that's just one thing to know. I, I mean, I think if it was just one person in there, you could say, well, that's just their problem, but the fact that the majority of them is this, um, and maybe they're really good at the survey part, but, you know, I think that's just, we have, yeah, libraries, they have them.
Okay, you can go back, you know, more of them.
Fair, I only met with one of the people, so I didn't realize it was like a group, uh, that came from there, but I think like one thing that's, I mean, one positive I think is that I, I drew, I, I brought up, you know, we're kind of in this to be situation right now that is publicly messy, and so how have they handled that? And that was kind of her answer, it was like, well, I used to work at Playboy and I'm comfortable with that, be like, so that actually made me feel a little better, but hearing that it's multiple staff, that is interesting.
Could we ask, um, if they, you know, if they, we, perhaps we could follow up to see if they've done, worked with.
And they have, yeah, they have talked about other public entities, um, but I can get a list so that we're all more comfortable with it. I don't want to, for words, if we're.
Yeah.
hesitant.
Mm-hmm.
And then I will keep, I'll, you know, just, just for the sake of that, I'll keep my, I have, uh, one Friday morning with, um, uh, let's see, who's, right, right, I believe it's the holistic, um, the holistic index on Friday morning.
And then I received a referral, um, from somebody in my, you know, somebody in the community that might be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just as I was arriving in the parking garage here that I folded to you on, but it doesn't look like it's, um, and for some reason somebody, but yeah, like email on there, so it's one of the, among colleges, um. It doesn't look like they do surveys, staff surveys, but I just arrived just for our meeting.
And so with this then, because that would move us back another month for deciding, unless we have a special meeting.
Well, I think, I mean.
We could do a special meeting, we just have to.
Well, right.
Christina's or.
Or just me.
Yeah.
I'm with that too.
Yeah.
I just, I, cause I am cognizant of like, if it takes six to eight weeks to conduct the survey and we're hoping that this plays a role into like the board, uh, executive director, sorry, executive director search, then I just, I don't want us to move too hastily, but I do want us to move.
It's that constant tension.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. One of the, one of the, the things about the, that I did, um, that, that this for holisticindex.com, um, is that they did, um, it looks like they do have, they have been doing some, uh, D E I, um, analysis, organizational analysis for some time, and so I, I did find, I was like hopeful about that with, um, that they, they do a number of other things, you know, in, like, in, uh, looking down here, they've, they also do trainings and, and those pieces and, um, I believe, uh, some, uh, hiring, um, search stuff, you know, so that we don't have to, uh, use them all of that, but they're, they do have a variety of facets into their, or into their organization, um. Let's see, and it's, and they've worked with a number of large groups over time, I, I, my one concern is that their, their price point might be, you know, higher than, you know, given who they have worked with, and I'm concerned their price point might be beyond what we're comfortable with, um, but this, it's, they do have. but this, it's, they do have, um, a pretty, what appears to be a pretty robust portfolio to pull from.
And how do you hear about your stick again, I forget?
That's through, um.
The, oh, okay.
Who's under the same.
The diversified search group.
Yeah.
Yes, diversified search group, acquired Quay, and also our, your stick.
Okay.
Um. So, I can reach out to, to pass that along in the first place, too, and ask about the Playboy.
You all?
I can, or you, if you wanna go directly back to them, I just say I could reach back to where.
I just was remembering, cuz, yeah, that's another, I think, cause.
We could also, you could reach them, like, if it's a little bit of a favor, then.
Sure.
I think that, I think that's a good idea. So.
This is, uh, this is trustee Foss, I think that each of the proposals is a little too, too little, too late.
Could you explain more, Ted?
Um, I, I'm just, I, I think that at this point, um, we really need to think about how, more about healing, and I don't see in either of these things that we're working with that.
Yeah, that seems, that's one of the, if you look at the email Ted that came in just before the meeting, um, that might be associated with that, um, they were talking about, um, meeting facilitation and, and resolution. I do think that we do need to make that a priority, um, but we also do, we did commit to doing a, a staff survey, so we need to follow through on it.
And I think, like, it's the recognition that there is difference, that, like, there's just differences among staff, so, like, shouldn't we know that going into an executive director's search of what people are wanting, what people are feeling? Um, I think that's where we landed last time.
Yeah. Um, oh, yeah, I'll, I'll continue with, with what I have scheduled, we'll pull this together, and, um, if we need to do a, a special meeting to kind of, um, vote to authorize this, um, to do that, and we can, and, um, so.
Yeah, we should set a special meeting when we have our two trustees that are out of town. Since, especially since we probably will not have a student.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah.
I could like to be around, maybe if it's on early April or something.
Okay, well, we'll try, we'll try not to, to, but too much on you, because I'm, this, this last stand is, 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 I don't, it's, it's been a lot, but it's also, you know, it's, you know, ever, every, every pregnancy is different, and I don't wanna add more to your, to your stress, if I can, if I can help it, um. So, all right, um.
Well, I think we should probably plan a long special meeting, it's just, we, we schedule it when we have our two trust ins back.
Yeah, absolutely, connected with that, good. Um, then assigning tasks for any of the board members, I think, the, the, the point of having this item on the agenda was specifically to just to kind of clarify that we're all, um, on the same page of, kind of, where, you know, you know, as we have all of these things coming ahead, um, uh, for us, the, um, that we're gonna be, uh, just accountable, you know, to things that we're committing ourselves to, um, related to, um, you know, the, you know, we have, you know, I, you know, consideration for an interim director search, a permanent director search, you know, permanent server, you know, permanent director, uh, communications and other items that, you know, that we'd be looking at, uh, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are all, uh, kind of on the same page of who's going to be, you know, involved in which particular processes, um, obviously, Christina, please refrain from overcommitting yourself, you know, for the next, you know, couple months.
Well, I would say I can do backend work for the next month, but then post-revenue, I'd rather have some time.
I, and I respect that, and I, and will do everything I can to, to, you know, to keep that, you know, to, to try and keep you from being, doing too many active things related to this work, that's, um, I will, um, for, one of the things I would like to, to mention, I mean, I did, I did text Mahari about this earlier, so that she didn't have to be tuned in, uh, for this, um, but I was thinking that as we move forward with a director's search, um, and should we pursue an RFP for search firms, I would like to create an ad hoc committee of the board to review proposals that are received, um, and then that, that committee would, uh, present two or three potential, um, finalists, uh, for, for the board to get, to meet with, and, um, hear more from as, as part of that process, so that, um, a, a committee of, of three trustees will have, will be, will have a easier time finding this time to schedule to meet than all seven of us, and I, I will trust the, you know, whoever is on that to be, you know, to review those, you know, those suggestions, um, and so, you know, I, as, as that, um, are there any trustees, um, aside from Christina, who would like to be a part of that? I don't, I've never excluded you specifically, but I just, I don't wanna make you feel like you have to be a part of that.
No, not a good timing for you.
No, um, and of course.
trustee Foss would like to be a member of that committee, thank you.
Okay, and of course, you know, I'll check in with Patricia and Mahari as well, um, following this, but I did wanna bring that up to that, um, that, I think that that would facilitate a considerate review of, you know, of those kind of, I think, as we, as we learned in our last process, the boilerplate proposals, and, um, have a chance to review those for who we, you know, can look, you know, look at those things, and who we might want to bring in to tease out more details, uh, and more insight from those potential vendors, um, with.
Check out the, the search, for the search.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be, uh, um, I would, you know, you don't have to let me know now, um, but just something to think about, um, you know, we haven't even decided to do an RFP, or, you know, in the, you know, or be done, you know, putting, putting that together, so.
Well, Christina did put together some, um, lists of, and, and some processes, that I would appreciate the work you did on that.
Yeah.
So we are, we are, you know, we do have some, yeah, what's, what's happening?
I don't want to connect though, but I.
I don't, I don't, I said, you should do it.
Yeah, I just, I always show up and look at what it is that you've done so far. For sure.
And the fact that it's a start for us, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I will share that in the next, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but so this committee would really be doing those, like, one of my conversations with the firms, getting together, talking through who's their, like, they would kind of come with a recommendation as a little word, is that right?
My, I, I was thinking more of like, they would be the ones to kind of, kind of comb through, yeah, if we get, if we get, you know, ten proposals.
Oh, if we do a RFP.
If we do a RFP, they would look through whatever we get, assess them, and say, okay, here are the three that, you know, that here are the two or three that, that we think could be, that, that are worth our time as a whole board to interact with, to, to meet with, or send a, you know, follow-up questions to, to get more information out of them, um.
I do think we should do, um, we should meet with them and ask questions before we hire somebody.
I agree.
And so last time, well, I'm sorry, these are kind of.
No, of course.
Can I jump on it?
By all means, please.
Um, last time, did we do an RFP?
We did.
Okay, and, but did we also do like intentional outreach to people, or?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's what we're kind of thinking of doing again?
Yeah, uh, both with RFP, then also, you know, letting, you know, letting some potential folks know, you know, firms know that the RFP is there, and here's, and here's the way to respond, but I think that we would want to review the responses to the RFP, um, I think there was, you know, so I think that would be our, would be your approach, I think that would be best, um, is, you know, to kind of set all of those side by side in that response, um, to the criteria that we put forward that had been an RFP.
Yeah, and we would do the job description, like, our, our reworking of the job description before we do that, and then maybe revisit it once we have a search firm.
I, I think we do it with the search firm, I, I, I mean, why go back twice?
My only thought is just that there were some things that we were saying that we wanted to do differently this time, and just whether we wanted to make that clear, um, so that the search firms we talked to last time who weren't interested might be again.
Okay.
So, just to kind of do a, you know, a once-over on it, and just get a basic, this is the direction we're going. Um, and then, yeah, um.
Okay, so.
Well, I think you, no matter who the EC is, there's nothing keeping the board from saying, hey, our top priorities in a firm are, you know, has you handled maximum of public library searches, has you handled maximum of nonprofit searches, has, you know, we, we can set those, those boundaries out.
Mm-hmm. Um, and, sure, moving back a little bit to the, you know, individual board number of things, um, Suzanne has, uh, stepped up and, and is helping, uh, work with me and, and library staff, my communication is used, um, so, just as, as a clarification, so that, you know, as we, you know, do responses to inquiries and stuff like that, Suzanne will be, will be looped into those pro, and into those, in those discussions, um, and, you know, so I just wanna, just to kind of put it out there so that we, you know, we are clear that we're all gonna have roles that'll be, you know, that we, we have moving forward in these processes with, you know, consideration of, you know, the, the search and, and other, and other responsibilities in terms of the, you know, there might be, you know, someone who is more involved with the survey, you know, liaison, you know, lia, you know, working with that as opposed to, you know, just, you know, me as, as that, so that it, it is, you know, there's a level of accountability in looping in, so that, uh, when, if there's two of us responding to these questions, it's not dependent on one person's work schedule, they have work schedule to be able to respond to someone, you know, between the two of us over, there'll be more flexibility, um, to, to address issues and the timing of the address, we're trying to move these things ahead, so.
And to that point, we're probably will reach out to the two of you about meeting with the two of you, and Sherry, to just like, check in, you know, get our page.
Fine, yeah, I, I would be, yeah, I do, I do that, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm on, I'm on the time.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
I told him, okay.
Yeah. Um, and then that kind of segues into our, you know, we've talked, talked a little bit about that as, um, at the executive director search process, um, I, I, I've, I've vocalized my, my desire for us to go to RFP, you know, and when, when it comes time to, you know, do the search firm, I, I'm open to a discussion about it, I, I don't want to, you know, force us down that path if, if other people feel strongly about it, but I did wanna put out that that's where I think is the best process, cuz I don't want any, I don't, my, my inclination is coming from mine, I don't want someone to say we play favorites with a vendor, um, I think, you know, we can look at, you know, if we develop an RFP language, I, I pulled the language from the previous one, um, and really, and I'll share it around, but I think it really kind of is, um, looking at an update of statistics for, you know, community population, our budget, our staff headcount, and a few other, and a few other things that.
Would you need that from us?
Uh, no, I mean, I'll, I'll send it to you to make sure that my, myself is correct, I started, I kind of started playing with it, um, but I think one of the questions I would like to discuss with the board and, uh, the two of you is, where, where do responses go, when, like, if we're gonna do an RFP, when do we post it? How long did, how long would the window be, and who receives those responses? Um, it went, the last time it went to David.
Did he?
Yeah, so I don't know.
He was gone, did he go to the lawyer?
No, all of that RFP was while he was still.
Oh, that was.
He was still here, no, that, when that RFP happened, so my, my thought would be, it goes to staff, um, to, to lead or, to lead or Suzie, that, um, if you, I don't know if you wanna create, uh, an email address, like, you know, rfp@oppl, where they can go, and then once that window is closed, you send, this is what happened last time, David got them all, and then he, we didn't get, we didn't see them as they came in, we got a, a bun, an email with a bundle of all of the proposals, like, the day after the window closed, that is.
Is there, can we have an email address that can go to one of us as well, or that we can, or like, that, that is, that's a, you know, a mandate, essentially, that forwards to.
I mean, just, but I guess my question is, is do you want it to be so that you're getting them, you know, not as personal? Cuz I think if the board would get them as they come in, then you're not having that process of like, seeing everything, or kind of. Don't ask questions, because some, and usually, the best practice would be, you, you have the RFP, publish it, you give at least ten business days for some, for people to review and ask questions, and get clarification, and then you publish that, and then you have between one month or six months for people to respond, so, a lot, I mean, I, I will say that having, having been the person in charge of the process and having also been the viewer, there is a concern, if you're in charge of the process, if you have like an aggressive vendor who's asking like a lot of questions on that email, or doesn't really seem to have their, their stuff together, or is maybe asking questions that you're not entirely comfortable with, usually they're, hey, how much money is it? Or, you know, I, I, like, if, even news reporter type questions, you'll get through those RFPs, so, it's honestly good for whoever is receiving those questions and is on the forefront not to be a reviewer, right? Because you could bias, and, and the person who is doing that proposal stuff isn't necessarily the same people who are going to be moving services, because you have a proposal team in a lot of cases, or a consultant, and they are not necessarily indicative of what that organization is like, or what those services that you're going to be receiving are like, and so the idea of it going to kind of a, a neutral party, whether it's, you know, one of you two, or, you know, you know, more of the admin, or like HR.
Billy would be, you know, somebody who, Chris, would be somebody who, you know, that's part of his job on the daily is to the jobs and receive and, and do all of that, and so.
So how do we normally, like, you know, when you throw something out for bid, um, RFP, um, IFB request for quote, how is Billy normally the person who handles that?
So I was gonna say, so Matt does, and I got a shout-out, it was two, my previous work, billing RFPs are different, because you have to sit and open down a public bid.
Right, right.
But, um, so I don't know if we've had experience doing RFPs for something that's not a public bid, where you're opening them up, and it's, you know, and then the people come to the bid opening, and, um, so I would have to look and see how they handled it last time.
Okay.
Um, I think that would probably be the last time done something with a RFP.
Okay.
Um, other than like IT related.
Okay.
Um.
And IT is usually kind of a machine, okay?
I think Elizabeth was doing that at the time.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily go, it goes to the SME, it doesn't necessarily go to the.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's not like a central. Okay, so there's not like a centralized person who kind of organizes that process and does the review and posts that.
So we're not, we're not doing a ton of RFP work, but I will show, like, right now, the home wall side, my position was open. That's typically under me. I, I see nothing. You know, I'm not involved in that at all. I don't even, it's shared with the people who are doing the search. You know, so I, you know, that's my director or my manager and, you know, all that. So.
That makes sense, because you, you don't wanna create me bias. You don't wanna.
No.
You don't wanna create a relationship with someone you're gonna evaluate shortly after, right?
I think we could definitely find a way to facilitate that in whatever manner. The only question I would have is if they ask questions, would we be comfortable answering that? Will we have enough information from you? Or could we like, I don't know how that happened in the past. What, do you know what kind of questions they asked?
I don't remember any questions coming to any of the board members. If there, if there were questions, David feels. I would, I honestly, I would say maybe give him a call to ask what, what his experience was as being the receiver and kind of the, the point of contact for that process.
And I can follow up with, um, Billy, who's here at that time.
Sure, he was.
There's also an element where it's like, there will be questions that you know you can answer. There will be questions that you know you're not, you know, they're just not appropriate to answer. Um, like I remember somebody had been like, well, tell me about the evalu, she published the evaluation of the previous consultant who handled, you know, this particular IT related thing. I was like, no, that's, that's not, that's okay. Like, we're not gonna publish their names or, you know.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully we're not.
Well, I guess we'll put an RFP, we can get it from wherever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that would play into bias. So it'd be like, well, you're not, you're not it.
Well, and the thing is though, again, the proposal, the person doing the proposal might not be the person who's getting or who's receiving the services, right? Because sometimes the higher proposal writer, it'll be a consultant, it's not the person who's actually giving you the services.
The difference between sales and engineers.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I'm dealing with that right now.
Yeah.
Um, did we, like, last time we did an RFP, this is before my tenure, how many did we get? Cause I'm just wondering, like, if we get an influx, like, how are we actually going to review them? Like, I, I'm glad you're gonna have a committee, but like. What we saw unless David we didn't snow out, so it's not that many. It wasn't, yeah, cause I, I mean, it's nothing to like compare to or three, I think, proposals for a survey, but then if we got like a bunch, I don't know, I'm like, I go to Ruger Town, but then that's more work, so.
They won't be around. It's not a bad, I think that's a good, cause I think it's actually really good to before you get those proposals. I would say it's a good idea to kind of have a general understanding that you give that EC to really be able to review and, and know what, what's going to throw someone over the edge or into the trash.
Yeah.
And it's not hard to do, like, when, when we, do we draft the RFP or do we work with staff to do that? How does that, how, does that work last time?
Another question is, is that when I've done construction RFP, you work with a construction consultant, because they can go.
Right.
So listen, bid to people who know, basically say, submit an RFP. You know, I don't know if that's the expectation of the board for staff to, you know, solicit, I personally know a number of firms. But I would also say, like, manage expectations. In the Chicago area, there's three firms.
Okay. A lot of them stuck on with us.
Um, Deers and Todd, who would not go with last time, ADR Source, um, Keister is retired, uh, Barbara Miller out of Ohio. Um, these are the big ones, but I think if you want to diversify your search and go with people who do schools maybe or public. And, and then Stan just took a really great search and they knew somebody who'd only done, um.
Oh, my advisory group.
Yeah, they have done, it's like superintendent searches, so that was their first public library. But I think getting somebody who knows like governmental.
I also did HR source. Yeah, I, I checked with, um, I spoke with, uh, Becky Keen, who's the board president now over the weekend. And I emailed her as a follow up and she, like, said that she had, that they, she felt that they had a great experience that the person that they've worked with there, I mean, of course, like, you, they bid on, they bid on it last time, they submitted a proposal last time, and that, and assuming they'll send them up again, and it's like, there are good, good options out there that we can have. And we, you know, there are, and I think, you know, to the point where we were looking at with, you know, I think it was Koyo, uh, before was, there are other alternatives that are looking at things differently now. And or that, you know, these groups that are looking at it differently and, and, you know, and realizing that perhaps their, the work that they have done is translatable into other realms of operation that might, that might be viable for us. But I think, but I do think, so based off what you were saying in your experience, a, a few weeks of, two weeks of like, hey, here's, here's a thing.
Yeah. And then we'll, we'll allow questions, clarifications and whatnot.
And then, and then a period of proposal. Now, we're not doing a big instruction project that will probably need lots of engineering design.
This is not, it's not, you know, RFP, right?
Like, like a two, like a two week, a two week, you know, uh.
I think a two and a three.
Two and three.
I'm wondering if like the other, it's special meeting that we sat, we try and like. Revise the RFP, we've got it pretty much there. We just may need to do it as like two.
I think it's input from me and Suzie.
Yeah, and, um, Suzanne, I have, uh, we had taken up minutes from the twenty twenty two, they, the sunset, that they were, you will send them to me. And there were six firms that you guys reached out to, to like ask to submit an RFP. Walker Associates, Nina Robinson for Culture, Ellis Leo's, we are Tom, Horstman Solutions, and Cherry Ellstein. And none of them, I think in the minutes, they said that none of them had.
Submitted.
Submitted.
Oh, that moved and stuff, seven stuff.
Yeah, so you had.
We got seven, we got seven responses initially.
But not the first time.
Yeah, so if we said you would invite sixteen firms to a task, there was an RFP.
Yeah, that's the second step then.
Yeah.
So then we have a list of people who.
So we have the first people, that'd be great.
We have the list of people who responded last time.
And we have.
Can invite them.
They're too smart.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a big event first.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think you're, I got it, um. The first time it was Brad Gary Miller submitted, ADR Source, uh, John Keister, Deers and Todd, Carrington and Carrington. Um, EFL Associates. And Greenwood Asher. That last one had mostly worked with university libraries, thinking of libraries searches.
Interesting. And, um, who did Evanston's do? I don't know. Alma tried to.
Yeah, that's who was recommended to me, but it was someone at Evanston.
And, um, Adam Goodman, uh, from North Boston was on the Evanston board. And he mentioned that, he didn't give me the name, but he said that he, that their sir, that he was really happy with how that served, how it worked with them, so.
And that's why people come to me?
I didn't get into a lot of details with it.
I saw there.
Okay, I can, I can ask.
I'd love to know, like, the, the, the why it made it happen, because it was like, hey, they just found really top notch candidates that were exactly what we're looking for. Or, hey, they actually pushed us so that we considered like these things that we hadn't considered. Or, you know, that's what I.
I just wanna know how the DEI approaches. So I think it's like, if we can finalize the RFP at the special, I do think a Ruger would be good. And I don't think it'd be hard to pull from the RFP, like, if, once we have the language from the RFP, we can say, okay, these are the things we value and care about and wanna see. And so then translate it to like a more.
And I've been, I've turned to the app, can we meet your group there?
I didn't sound Ruger, so I mean.
So, alright. So, alright, so we, we have a sense of that.
And we're happy to help whenever with capacity. You guys want us to, if you want us to help.
I would, I, I would be appreciated. Since you were at, that was when they were, you were at that, correct?
I was.
And while they were doing that search, so you, no, it was, okay, so, sorry, not, not, not to open.
I was gonna say.
But it's.
Yes, no, I do recommend, uh, Pualsh, either, and I want Cindy, she was there. We had two, so the executive director was very, there were two. Assistant director was one left, one stepped up, one exited as well. But yeah, I know that they want the paper stuff. And, and, and I know that helped her well, so. Um, I, I also know Evanston, you know, I'm just gonna be honest, you know, they also worked difficult, it's a diff, and a challenging situation. And so I think they really had to look upon the scope, you know, like, do something different. It took them a while, that would be my only concern, is I know Evanston was faking for a real year.
Yeah, they were also getting issues on the village level, on the city level, with their city manager stuff. There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues there. Yeah.
But I heard things about their kind of directors, and they did well.
That's very helpful.
There are also some of the HR sources, just capacity, if they have capacity, we can reach out to them, and then we'll hear and.
Yeah, they were, were.
They're, they're busy, they're doing a lot of development, and what you gave the stuff that they have so on.
And I, I think that was one of the.
That was a question, if they have capacity or if they do.
I, no question, they have capacity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Some of the ground crap about is whether it's a paid search time.
Absolutely.
And then I, like, with the point I asked for a specific names of who, the people who would be dealing with library searches, they, they'll be getting that.
And I think, and I think that was one of, one of the issues that came up before was there were some, uh, people that we reached out to in that second round of solicitations who said, you know, this isn't something that they, they've never done a public body search, but it's something that, that they would be interested in. But they were, they just didn't have the, that they, like, their, that their portfolio, like, their staff was fully committed to, to tasks, and they did not.
Yeah, well, we lost, it was right during the, the massive change wave of jobs from, um, COVID. So, um, they were really, they were booked for a few weeks and, um, ended up taking longer, so maybe we need better, so we get a chance to look at them, yeah.
Yeah. So. Alright. Um, and I think, unless anybody has a thing else, I think we have a good sense of that role. Once, uh, we'll connect with Virginia Macarimah about potential dates for a special meeting to finalize uh, a search, um, agreement, as well as approve an RFP language. And to get, to get that all rolling with the idea of perhaps a two week posting for questions and clarifications, and then a three week posting for people to review and submit.
Does it need to be two weeks? I'm just asking.
I just.
Usually they, a rule of thumb is no less than ten days, because you want people to be able to read it and then ask those clarification questions. So if you make it too short of a period of time, then you might have people who are confused, don't understand. And legitimately, I will say, I, I have spent a long time writing an RFP that I thought was brilliant. And I put out the bid and, like, there were so many vendors that were like, well, you realize you missed this bit. And hey, this, this particular part of the service wasn't discussed, and we don't understand how this happens. And if I hadn't pulled and rewritten and wrapped, you know, that part, I would have missed out on like the six people that applied, and I would have not gotten anyone. So. It is a little bit of.
Can I make an current, like, can we have questions while having folks submit?
Oh, yeah, no, it's not, you, how can you throw up and forbid, it's open.
I see, okay.
Right, it's just usually.
Would we not answer questions after the two weeks? Though, I guess that's.
Yeah, it's, you, you should say after two weeks, this is, this is your deadline, because if you keep, if you keep changing them, to a certain extent, the ball might be changing. Like, if somebody responds.
I guess it depends on the question.
Right, and, and they say, hey, what's your most important thing? Is it the timeline?
Yeah.
Or is it the price point, right? And if someone's written a very aggressive timeline, and we come back and say, hey, the price point is actually the most important thing, they're gonna wanna pull that proposal, they're gonna write it, right? Or if you say, hey, um, who's gonna, who's gonna manage those decisions? So volunteer, your volunteer group. And it's like, okay, well, we're gonna actually have, you know, someone on staff who's going to receive this. Or we have a smaller subcommittee, like, those are all really important pieces that a vendor is gonna want to know.
Was there a hard question, though, that like, I don't know, that was like, that to your question earlier, I don't think staff would be able to answer it. So then it's like, who's responsible from us?
I would say the EC should answer that, right?
We just say EC. Okay.
Did I, which would maybe the three, the three more.
And I think, I think with the RFP, we want to include that we would be wanting to include the language that the initial responses will be reviewed by an evaluation committee that will be making final recommendations to the, to the whole board.
Right.
For, for further engagement from the whole board, okay.
Yeah, I would say that. And we could also, like, in that case, when we publish, I, I would need to look at, you know, the RFP. But I've written RFPs where it's like, evaluation committee will score you, and the top five scores or the top two scores or the top, you know, four scores, what, what it is that we think merit it, that will move on to final round and in-person interviews and, you know, onsite visit, not that we need onsite visit. But you know, something as that next round, I have also written RFPs that are like, if you don't get these points, you don't go. And so literally, like, I've gotten twelve RFP responses and only one final. Because it's like, there are a bunch of people that said, you know, we said, hey, you have to have six years of experience. You have to be on good, in good standing with the Illinois Human Rights, um, Department of Human Rights. And there was one vendor that, you know, met all that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, but I could hear, but I don't think that what we're doing, we need to have that script of our, kind of, it's a huddling down. I don't think there are that many.
I think it's more of like.
It's very specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, it's both for. Cause what kind of, are easier to type. I, and I probably, I didn't know how it's been from, if I experienced, but like, I like it, cause it's very, um, it's very.
Sure.
Structured, yeah. And then I probably wrote it a little different, but I, I would say like, it's, yeah, like, having a group would more so just be like, I mean, I think we in general agree like on our values as a board, but do you wait, like, DEI in the same way as like cost, like, different things, you know? And so like, if there's not available, that's an automatic no.
Right.
Um, but like, it would just help with discussion, I think, to have. And then also like for, because only three of us would be in the committee, then like the rest of us can see kind of the work of like why the decision was made. I don't know, I'm a little.
I think it's really, I, I always advocate for the, um, EC to create some form of document, whether it is a rubric, whether it is a memo to file, because it, we're doing this for the public, you know, you know, and it, it should be a transparent problem. So you should not ask why, you know, the Rogers Foundation was selected as opposed to the Fairfax Foundation, right, as opposed to the first, right? It needs to be like, hey.
Yeah.
The Rogers Foundation was able to, at a reasonable cost, with a strong background in DEI, um, you know, meet our timeline versus the Fairfax, who though they had superior DEI experience, you know, they weren't able to get on their calendar, we weren't able to get in their calendar for another year. And the first, you know, organization was just so astronomically expensive, we couldn't conform them.
Right.
Not to individually signal out.
I appreciate it. That's, that's an important perspective. And it's like, you know, it's like, we, we all come from different backgrounds, different experiences of hiring and engaging consultants and vendors, but like, you know, being a public body.
Yeah.
It is, there, and it's, it's a unique, as, as each of our experiences, I mean, this is a unique process that has its own. Uh, we're putting it out for the board to make a decision, but we are a public body, and so there are those balances, I think. Uh, we can. Work on that, so perhaps two weeks and two weeks. Um. For, you know, questions and then, you know, in case any revisions need to be made in a two week. Also, I believe that the initial one we did before was two weeks.
Okay.
Um. I'm hopeful that the, the past RFP, I believe there was two weeks.
But we need the moment before that.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So like people would not be just finding out about it on that first day, they should maybe know that something is brewing and will be public.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, Friday. Yeah. So, alright, so we've got that. Um. Then we have the, uh, and so I think.
Sorry, one question.
I.
Not gonna be here, but I'm, I just, I know I wrote that whole document and it was more for myself because I just. Need to organize my thoughts around it, but. Thinking about next steps, like, do we have a timeline that we're hoping to kind of try to meet?
Um. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't have a good answer for that, right?
I don't know if anyone knows, like.
Well, I guess if we're not like to hire, but I guess to like get this. Committee up and running to get the RFP solidified, to get the rubric solidified, to launch the RFP, like there's so many steps and I go into my project management. Life of just like.
Let's.
When are we going to do those things?
So. I'm used to project management at a date, moving. You know, but I'm not sure that we can with this. So maybe, you know, we start with. We've set a special meeting between now and our next one, so two weeks from now. For our other members to get back in town, right?
Yeah.
For a special meeting and. Um, when they're back in town, figure out who the, the full committee is by that special meeting.
Yeah.
Get the, the RFP. Um. Revised at that meeting. Um. And then. Give us a little time to get it out and maybe like give a week to get it out and then the two week and the two week.
Yeah, like, but you know, get it, get it published, whatever it is that we need. The following Monday. Begins the two week window and then two weeks after that it goes for.
What do you think about our next official board meeting, that's the twenty-third? I know maybe this isn't too much time, but if we aim to publish on the twenty-second, then at the board meeting, we can actually note the fact that it's been published or.
Yeah.
That sounds about right with what we were just saying.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking too, we can say, hey, it's been published, it will close. And then that will close right before our next board meeting on the twenty-eighth of May. If we do the two week, two week.
Well, then, uh, I would say like, well, if we can meet in. Though, if we can, if, let's say, if we can meet the week of the eighth. If we can meet the week of the eighth, then like. That week or the fifteenth, Monday the fifteenth, we can. Publish the RFP for like the question period and say, hey, the question time is up and next week it goes live. Then two. Well, yes, I mean, uh, uh, like, you know, the question stop. On the twenty-ninth. And then the twenty, then it closes May tenth. And the evaluation committee hopefully will be able to meet sometime in May. And we could have, uh. Invite, you know, so, you know, invite finalists to May and have our discussion. With them and that be our main meeting.
So our funds come to our main meeting, you're saying?
Yeah, if, if like, this is like. My, my most hopeful, optimistic, ambitious timeline of things, it's like, I, I know I'm, it, it feels like it's pushing.
We will. But I think that's why we gotta sacrifice, because it is like ambitious, but then at least if we foster that, we're pushing it all the way to June, you know, so.
So if we publish on fifteen, then we can make the announcement on the twenty-third. That as of the twenty-sixth, there will no longer be questions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we would keep, we would.
The twenty-sixth, they've been.
Well, the twenty-ninth would be, well, yeah, right, I, I.
Or we did the twenty-nine, either way. Right, and I would, and so you get the questions, we stop with the questions. Usually you want to give yourselves like three days to respond to questions, or we can get no questions.
Yeah, we did those questions, we have a good. Yeah, Friday, the twenty-sixth, yeah, that makes sense.
Publish on like the twenty-ninth. And then. Two more weeks would bring us to the thirteen, so lucky. Lucky thirteen.
We publish. The question.
Uh, no, it's on Monday, the fifteenth. Maybe, I, I am weirdly superstitious, so I'd say Tuesday the fourteenth, it'd be after day. Um. And then that would give the evaluation committee approximately two weeks. To choose. Their top two, top three, top one. Um. To break, to invite them to.
Meeting.
Meeting. And it'd be via Zoom.
Yes.
Because if we get someone who's not Chicago local, I am not flying in.
Yeah, Roger Miller, I go home and, you know, so, uh.
I think the same is fine, because that's probably how most of their business will be conducted.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good way for us to, to get a sense of.
To get, get a sense of them, yeah, that's good.
Did I talk too fast with those dates?
A little bit.
Okay. Yeah.
I've never heard you talk fast, but.
At her.
Um. I got it, publish twenty-ninth, wait, question stopped for twenty-sixth, publish the twenty-ninth.
Mm-hmm.
Closes May tenth. Evaluation.
Uh, I thought we were gonna do it on the fourth.
Okay.
We could, we could do it on.
I think he's.
You want to do it now?
Or looks be.
For the closing.
Either way. I, 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 I mean, honestly, I'm not.
Okay, I'll put one or the other and we'll sort it out.
It's potentially two full weeks of no questions, right? Two full.
Two business weeks, yeah, but twenty-ninth is not, is ten business days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Well, this is the time, the bio session committee need. May finalists meet, um. Via Zoom. With board. On May tenth. I mean, for me.
Probably eight.
God, I'm afraid, I looked up.
I talked too fast and, you know, I was a little tired.
So, I'm lost, I don't want to sleep.
Yeah.
Um, that must be, um, board on May tenth, May eighth, via Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Alan.
Thank you, thank you for, for. Because I think having, 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 it keeps us, it keeps us accountable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the first step of a. Holders.
You know, the antecedent, I mean, in forty-eight hours in advance, we're able to talk more than two of us, we should.
And hopefully people who sign up for the committee will know what dates they have to kind of be someone.
I did want to note that the May twenty-eighth board meeting is on the tail and Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, good point.
Are we, are we doing our board meeting on the twenty-eighth or do we want to move it back like? A day in case people go out of town, have a life. Like their children up at the time.
I will, I will, I will send out an email to the board, um, to, to see what available dates are around that. I, I prefer not to move it up to the twenty-first if, if at all possible. That's typically what we've done is we've moved it up a week, but I think given everything we have right now, I don't want to do that. Um, I'll, I, I will.
Move it back.
Yeah.
It's almost like the twenty-ninth, yeah.
Yeah.
That, yeah, the twenty-ninth to the thirty, that one's there, Thursday.
Yeah.
I will send out an email to everyone to get feedback as to if that Wednesday or Thursday. Works, went better and we'll go with.
Yeah.
That.
And as far as our special meeting, like the end of the week, the eighth works better for me. Um, we'll have to check with the two.
Yeah.
Here, and do we still have Ted?
Ted?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's still there, good.
Okay, we just want to make sure we're still, I have a, sometimes you, you drop off this free, so we just want to make sure you're there. Okay, so. Now we have some, some, some dates and some timelines for us to, to work into and to hold ourselves to, um. And. It goes.
So. Of those of us who are here and Ted. Does the Thursday, the eleventh work? Well, obviously I should check the other two there. Again, we're all here.
Let's see.
You. Did I just have a bigger one?
Yeah, the, yeah, the eleventh works for me, yeah.
Um.
Good.
So now you can check with the other two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ted?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
I mean, honestly, it's sort of in the middle and it's. Giving you a little. Yeah, keeps us moving, keeps us on.
Let us know if that works, go down and do it on the calendar.
Absolutely. Um.
If I should. Live so long.
You'll be fine, speedy recovery to you, Ted. Um, that will then take us into, um, there's about another interim executive director. Uh, it's part of, uh, the email from Susan Lee. Uh, you know, they comment, you know, those who saw they commented and they are confident in being able to carry this on for several months. Uh, they have asked for additional compensation to reflect their additional duties. Uh, I fully support that, um, as if everyone is on board with that. Uh, well, I can direct, uh, that approval and we'll, we'll move that forward, um. Do, um, in terms of. In the meantime, do we want to pursue, uh, the bringing in, uh, an external. Uh, executive director to do that, um, I spoke with, uh, Becky Keane of Niles. Over the weekend and they recently had an interim executive director experience. And they, and, and the way she described it was a sort of, um. Their, their interim worked about twenty hours a week. Uh, assuring, um, financial bills got paid, you know, if there were various legal certificates, um, were filed properly. Um, board agendas prepared, board communications handled, sort of, I think, I think the email I sent kind of. Administered caretaker, I think, uh, as opposed to sort of, uh, driving the vision of the library during that time. Uh, was really kind of there to make sure. The library business continued doing that, um. So. Is that, you know, something we. Want, want to pursue and then, uh, and then it should be fine someone for that. Uh, let, uh, Suzie and Lee back, back to their, uh, regular duties for which they were originally hired. Uh, uh, and I think they would probably like to get back to sooner than soon, the sooner the better. Um, just for the, the additional stress that they are now under, um. But is that. Sort of where we're at, do we want to? I don't, I don't know, it's, I've never been in a position of, of bringing on an, an executive director. Um, on board, you know, we had, you know, David sat down, Lori kind of just. You know, rose up into that position, um, with the hope that it wouldn't be that long, um. The vision D, Brennan and David, I think they were, I think D worked up until David came on. Um, so there was like a really, I think, if anything, there was maybe a few weeks and Jim Madigan and Cindy Landrum, who was now just recently. Uh, I think main, uh, director of the Institute of Library Museum, Museum and Library Science in DC, which. Is amazing, I was like so happy when I saw that, uh, seeing that for her, um. And I don't remember what happened with, when Ed Byers left and D came on, but so it's like, I, this is new territory for me, so, um. But, you know, that, you know, this would be something we would want to briefly discuss in closed session, I think. Um, you know, you know, a possible person to, to reach out to for that, um.
I would, I'd like to hear though from, um. Suzie and Lee though, like what your feeling is, because we also haven't been in this.
Right.
Training the board even, so, um. Kind of what your thoughts are on what staff will benefit staff and the library. At this juncture, but I know. Nothing, but.
Well, I think, you know, I was on with the, you know, Matt, and I do feel comfortable stepping up and part of that was just. The community vigil, when directed at me personally, that was so, to, I was just scared to sit in the seat because I didn't know what was gonna happen next. I am very grateful that Lee, uh, has agreed to deal with me because I only been here for a few months and I don't know the history. And so while I do know the administrative side for, while, um, I've worked closely with directors for the last couple of years. Um, we provide a lot of that historical, you know, cultural stuff, so we've got a really good. Kind of team in that, and I will say, um. You know, we worked really well for the first week, um. Getting things done, I think I probably speak for most of the staff, when I had a meeting with the. Patron services, you know, they want, I think we can't really move forward and tell me who the executive director. And I would, like, I think they would really want that to be the focus, instead of trying to find somebody who can get in, it is a part-time job, um. You know, kind of going through that process that maybe just focusing on the executive director, we can keep things running. I think some of the other items listed on there, um, I do think having a review of that particular event would be a really good idea. Um, I still have a lot of questions because it happened on the second day here, like. I, I really don't know the full context, a lot of it happened before I started, so I was.
Mm-hmm.
Not really aware and I think maybe having somebody independent or new would be a really fantastic idea, or else has somebody who. Like, just like, you know, just kind of having somebody put all the pieces together would be helpful, but I think in terms of running the library, we, you know. Uh, when we have a leadership management team, they kind of were like, okay, yeah, we know the drill. Because Lori was just here, it wasn't that long ago, and so they were like, okay, we got it, status quo, nothing changes, we're all gonna do our job and. Uh, I really appreciated that, I was kind of surprised by that, but the staff was saying to know how to operate and, and, and. Territory fair well, so. I think that also speaks to. That's been a much more manable one.
Yeah.
Sorry for the vigilante pursuit, you and Jody especially, I mean, I think we've both faced it too, but, um, it's not. For any of us, that's.
It's not a hard topic, it's a great job, you know, the game starts before two p.m. and. Been librarian for a long time, and it is part of the gig, um, but. I was, you know, tightly and.
Yeah.
You're believed to, you know, I.
Also before you even get to establish. Who you are, yeah. So, yeah.
I, I think, like, I fully support, uh, well, I don't know, are we talking about compensation or how it's.
Well, I, 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 I saw a head nodding around the table about the idea of the.
Unless Ted, did you, do you object to anything in the letter in terms of compensation or whatnot, because I, I think. There's a general sense here, but I don't want to say anything for you.
So Matt, as I look forward to what Suzie and Lee are doing, it's wonderful. But then I do want to look at the whole budget and how we're going to go forward. And if you could share the email that I sent to you earlier today, I would appreciate it.
Yes. Will do.
I think one thing we said here, you know, though, um, Suzie was, like, it was up to six months, is that flexible or is that? Because I just worry that our search is not.
I think, you know, I think it's.
I know.
You know, I think we would definitely extend it, um. If needed, but I, I'm, I'm actually very fortunate to hear. The pro, like, the timeline and, and really, you know, what that's been positive to him and I think we, you know. The pro, like, the timeline and, and really, you know, that's been positive to him, and I think we, you know. I, like, we're just getting a lot of questions from staff, like, what's the process, and I said today, I don't know, like, I just found out one today. Um, and so I think that that's where, you know, we're kind of just looking for that in that staff, and I think you guys have a good plan going forward, and I'm. Like I said, really good to hear and hopeful.
I feel like we also are, are getting, um, a good plan for, and that's part of the whole kind of focus on communications internally and externally, and everything is. How we can work within the constraints that we have. And that we have to, you know, we can't meet more than two of us unless we do forty-eight hours for notice, and then we have a special meeting, and then people in the community don't understand what a special meeting is, like, it's some sort of. Oddity, it's just anything that's not. Already in a board meeting, I think that's a special meeting, that's the only way we can. Meet more than two of us, um, so trying to, you know, just establish, and that's where we kind of came up with the idea of, of different people kind of. Making sure we're clear who we have a committee and then the way to communicate, and as long as we don't. Reply, oh, then we're not getting a domain, you know, but still able to function. So that we're not waiting from, you know, one month to the next month to do things, and we get that we need to do special meetings, we've been doing special meetings because. This is important for the community, um, so. Um, we're also going to have a plan so that we'll meet in closed sessions, they don't last as long, so we don't wear ourselves out.
Yeah.
Um. So that, that we have the, you know, the capacity to keep doing that, but yeah, I think, um. I think we understand the, the importance. Of staying on this and getting things continually moving forward, um. At the same time, we also want to be aware of how staff's responding so that we can. You know, we have all these tasks to do, but we also want healing and.
Mm-hmm.
You know, all of that, so that's, I think that's gonna be one of our biggest tensions.
Yeah, and I think that I got that a lot today, what are we doing to heal? And I think part of that is, I have gotten recommendations from staff about what sort of practice. There's a lot of emotions in this building, and there's a lot of feelings, um. If this week being some break is gonna be, a lot of people are out. Um, next week a bunch of us are at the PLA, and then we all come back, and it's National Library Week. And our amazing help of all this committee has put together events every day, we have a staff after hours on the twelfth. And it will be, um, pizza and, uh, a concert, and I think. It is a fractured staff, it is a divided staff, and. I, you know, I'm not sure what's gonna be the piece that puts us all back together, um. At one of the meetings, someone said time. You know, you know, um. But, Lee, I'm just talking to you.
No, I mean, it, I, I've been checking in with people and, yeah, I, I don't. I don't think we're in our place right now to really kind of even begin that, we just have to kind of let people, like, deal with the emotion and, and think about moving forward. But I do think the fact that, like, Suzie and I are in this role, I think that gives people a lot of confidence that, well, at least we don't have to worry about, like, the day-to-day is going to be done, like, we're going to continue to do the things we've been doing.
Oh, I, I am hearing that, I'll take your view on that, and I'll say, uh, at all sorts of purpose, uh. Suzie and Lee and I are going to have weekly check-ins on, like, on Thursdays, um. And, uh, just to, you know, not, not, I don't think we, at this point, set any kind of regular agenda on it, but, you know. Maybe it's five minutes, maybe it's thirty minutes, who knows, I think it kind of will depend on week to week what's going on, but I think. Just continuing to be able to, you know. You know, checking with you and hear, and hear from you directly as to, you know. What you, what you need from the board, what you need from me, and, and, and how things are going, um. If you need, you know, specific updates on whatever. You know, for that, so, we, I, I can't remember, we said, what time we said, but it's Thursdays, I think, in the afternoon, Sunday, October. Uh, I, we didn't put any on calendar, but I remember that key.
Yes. And I will, and I will follow up with you so we can get something.
Yeah, and so that, um, just so that, you know, there's a regular communication, um, on that, um. So.
Could you just update, like, the board after, like?
Oh, of course.
Like, you have a rest of them?
Yeah, you got it. Um.
That, that's helpful, since we've started.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
That's why, that's why we thought I would make sure we stay.
We're all aware of what's, what's happening, so know our, our good, yeah. Um. My wife has one feet, so. Um.
I always think of Vass and Show, just like, one of my favorite movies, it's Two Left Feet. Do you remember that?
I haven't seen that in a while.
Such a great movie.
So, I, so, okay, so I think that kind of resolves the question of the interim executive director position being, um.
Appreciate your comments and what I'm saying. What I want to do, that, obviously, that only argument too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, keeping the waters calm and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you had mentioned something about, um, having somebody independent in. For the two pieces that you've already.
Well, I think the boy, I mean, I do appreciate that, you know, it is public comment, not public conversation, I was appreciating if someone said, hey, what's going on with that? I was never given that opportunity, somebody clarify, I had been working with a lawyer, um, to advise me on all. Um, boyas going forward, and I appreciated his cooperation yesterday, because he called and gave me. Case law, for everybody about this precedent, because it was very, you know, um. But I, I do think if you want an independent review of that, what happened with this particular incident. I do, I mean, I, I think it needs to be somebody who. Who's independent and neutral and wouldn't. Um.
Yeah. My, I think a suggestion was, the, uh, a friend of, you know, I, I'm, I'm friends with someone who's on the way with. Uh, library work, um, we, uh, and we, we've talked about this, you know, they've had a number of issues over the last couple of years. Uh, with their stuff, and they used, um, and their interim was Kathy Parker. Um. And my friend and I were talking, and I was, you know, she seen this, you know, the statements, um. Uh, that we, that we made, and she, and she suggested that perhaps Kathy might be someone who could. Um, be brought in, she has engaged on, you know, I believe she's written books about public libraries, um, and stuff, and is very well versed. Um, in that, that might be someone, uh, to bring in and could. Discuss, uh, and. I know that, uh, she mentioned that Kathy's recently had surgery, but, you know, I think all of these conversations could be via Zoom or, you know, that document. I'm not saying we, that she's the one we have to use, but it's just, I think that might be, you know, someone with library experience and.
Are we talking, though, about someone to review the post standing event?
Yeah. Someone from the outside.
Maybe want to think. About lived experience in that role, and somebody that has experienced, um. Being marginalized and stereotyped. I think that could be important for that particular issue.
Mm-hmm. No, it's absolutely, yes, it, I think that's important, I think that's, it's something I had not considered, and I appreciate you at that point, um. I don't think we have to decide that tonight, um, I think it's.
Put together a list of. Um. People who, you know, we, we just wanted to get Harris to see, because I think you're, I'm, right, there's a massive whole group experience, you know, I walked out of that meeting on Thursday, and I started crying, because I was like, there's no hope there in that room. I also think there was an issue in the tunnel, you know. Not understanding, um, misunderstanding, just kind of what happened, I think there's a lot of confusion. You hear that word over and over when people talk about, I don't understand what's going on, what the issue was, and so I think if we were able to. Help shed some light on that, what happened, and the community aspect, I mean, I think it's a very well said, whatever direction you guys wanna go or have to support, I just don't think. Internally, we have the way people, like.
No, I think your, your, your instinct is right.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
Yeah.
That would be up to the board to decide who that, they would feel comfortable moving forward with, um.
So.
And, and, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, having to write some stuff, I, I think having somebody maybe from the community who understands. Of, and, you know, some of that might be helpful, and if there's people who know.
And, and it could be a, a partner, a partnership of two, two people, you know, someone with. Library, you know, someone that maybe Monica recommends, someone with library experience, someone from RALs or ILA or something like that. Along with someone in the community who has that, that experience, and they can work in tandem to. Approach this and, and, and have that, that perspective side by side together, um, to kind of cover those two pieces of. You know. For lack of a better phrase, those boiling spots of, of experience, um. That we can, uh, that we can make sure that that's a real, that it's thoroughly covered, and, and examined.
Yeah.
And, and, so it doesn't happen anymore, I think that's what you never wanna, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause pain to anyone, and so. We didn't want to put that.
Yeah. Okay. I think we have our next steps. Um, I don't, I, I don't have anything in my mind that we need to go into closed session for. Um, that we have, um.
Do you have questions? This is your last chance.
No, I'm not looking like this is the earliest we're gonna get out.
I know.
Like, why?
Are Susan Lee or are there any issues that you, that we need to take? Okay. With that said, um, we have, uh, concluded our business for our meeting and declare a adjournment.
Susan.
I looked up at five, it's like eight fifty, it's not early, like, is it?
Hey, Chad, thanks, Charlie.